We'll now move on to item number seven, Facility Services, Placer County Government Center, Costco Wholesale Corporation and Conki Real Estate Development LLC negotiations. Director Dietrich.
Chairman, Members of the Board, Mary Dietrich, Facility Services. I'm pleased to be here today seeking your direction on the financial terms for negotiations for an option to ground lease and a ground lease agreement with Costco and approval of related agreements to facilitate that negotiation. With me today to make this presentation is Lori Morris, the county's property manager; Mark Wrightout, our deputy director; Michelle Kingsbury, who is now with SEDRA but was previously with the Department of Facility Services and worked as the project manager on this particular project. Also in the audience is Mike DeBroda, representing Costco Wholesale Corporation; Jim Conki from Conki Real Estate LLC; and certainly interested members of the public and tenants from the Placer County Government Center. There are three actions that are being requested of you today. Those are to approve the proposed key business and financial terms for an option to ground lease and ground lease agreement between the County of Placer and Costco Wholesale Corporation. Second action is to authorize the Director of Facility Services or Designated to execute a real estate lease services and property development agreement between the County and Conki Real Estate Development LLC at a cost not to exceed $937,500 in net county cost; and to authorize the Director of Facility Services or Designated to execute a site access and negotiating agreement between the County and Costco Wholesale Corporation. And I would just bring to your attention, there were some aerials that were provided or slides that were provided to you this morning. We've updated the first one because the aerial that I think that was provided to you was not the most current. So the one up on the board represents a very current, the most current aerial that we have of the Placer County Government Center. By way of background, I think it's important to, invaluable to briefly look back at the origins of the Government Center and its history, unique history, I think, has a federal, state and county facility. And it's also interesting, I think, to me to note some of the similarities that we're looking at today that played into the Board of Supervisors' decision dating back to 1971. Going back to its federal roots, the complex was constructed in 1943 during World War II to receive medical casualties from the Pacific Theater. The complex was built in little less than one year. It originally comprised 750,000 square feet of building on 220 acres of land. It was a self-contained facility with water treatment facilities, sewer treatment facilities, and was really well-known for its connected corridors that connected one end of the complex to another. This chapter, however, was really short-lived in that after one year, the hospital was declared surplus by the War Assets Administration and was closed in 1945. In June 1946, the center was acquired by the State of California for a mental institution. In that area, in that operation, it ran for 24 years. But in 1971, the State Department of Mental Hygiene announced the closure of the state hospital. As an economic anchor for the Auburn community and the area's largest industrial, industry and employer of more than 1,000 jobs, this announcement triggered a one-and-a-half-year campaign to save the center. The property was offered to the County by the state, and development of the options by the County was an important factor back in the early 1970s to determine what to do with the complex. At 750,000 square feet and 220 acres, it was quite an asset for the County to take on and really exceeded its needs and abilities to actually maintain it. So, the County Board of Supervisors at that time prepared a study, it's called the DeWitt Report, to take a look at the alternatives for acquiring the property. The main options that they considered were to accept the ownership of the property but not to use it for their own county purposes, but to use it for options for future development. The second option was to use it, or to accept the ownership, use it for capital development, and to solicit occupancy from others to help support the ongoing development of the facility. And the third option was to reject the county, the state's offer of ownership. I think fortunately for all of us, the Board of Supervisors at the time chose alternate two, which was to retain the property and to look forward to developing capital projects on the property and looking for opportunities to operate and maintain the property. At the time, the County Executive, Richard Andrews, made a number of findings about the property, and these are what I think are kind of relevant at this point in juncture, in that it was that the County did not need all of the buildings for its use, that non-county public entities were interested in occupancy, that land and buildings had the potential for uses such as light industry, multiple residencies, or commercial activities, and that the Auburn area would benefit by the development of an employee base generated by private use of the property. As a result, in 1972, the County accepted the deed, which contained a limitation on use of the property for public purposes, but immediately began pursuing legislation to eliminate that restriction so that private uses could occur on the property. The County was successful in that effort, and in 1978, Assembly Bill 1943 was approved by the Governor, which removed the restriction in exchange for a quitclaim deed back to the state of 18 acres, which were subsequently sold for private development. So the County property now comprises approximately 200 acres, and the 18 acres that were sold are those that are east of the Grange Hall, developed at the Heritage Oaks Project. For the last 40 years, the County has maintained an aggressive leasing program to generate revenues for ongoing maintenance and operations, improvement of roads, parking lots, buildings, and common areas at the complex. Additionally, over the last 30 years, the County has fulfilled its initial goals by constructing a significant number of county projects on the property, including the Auburn Jail, the Finance Administration Building, the Community Development Resource Center, and the Auburn Justice Center, as well as numerous smaller projects and renovation projects that house our other occupancies at the center. At this time, however, staff believes that most of the originally constructed buildings have exceeded their useful life, and the cost to upgrade the obsolete buildings no longer meet code and regulations and far exceeds the return from leasing. So turning to, fast forward to more current time, in July of 2011, staff presented to your Board an update of the county's comprehensive facility master plan, which was originally prepared in 1993. And although that particular presentation was, and that document was probably this big, it was laden with all kinds of data and detail about file cabinet storage and great detail. We believe that that was not a good path to follow because of the intensity of that effort, and that as we programmed buildings moving forward, we revisited all of that data and so found that that wasn't really a productive way to proceed in terms of looking at our capacity and needs out into the future. So the effort in 2011 was a more general approach to look at capacity based on projected populations and building needs. And in doing so, the conclusions that we drew were that there was adequate capacity in the Government Center through at least the year 2035, and in fact, I think there was another analysis going to 2050, to accommodate the county operations. And as well, the evaluation identified that there was additional capacity for current development in the vicinity of Willow Creek and first street near the Home Depot project.
Chairman, Members of the Board, Lori Morris, Property Manager, Facility Services. In November 2011, staff received an unsolicited offer from Conki Real Estate Development LLC to pursue the development of a Costco warehouse store on the 16 acres at the Placer County Government Center. This proposal was considered highly desirable by the County, given that Costco is a very sought-after retailer, well-respected, and has a good reputation, highly profitable, well-capitalized, and creditworthy. Costco brings rents, sales tax, and in lieu property taxes to the County. It would bring new jobs, approximately 165 to 170 new jobs, to the local economy, and they're recognized for being a good employer, providing a living wage and health benefits to its employees. Therefore, your Board approves the exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Conki, which would allow Conki the time to perform feasibility studies, negotiate terms for the lease, and investigations of the property to determine whether the property would be viable for a Costco development. During the term of the exclusive right to negotiate, Conki and Costco performed a series of feasibility analysis, met with various staff and entities to determine costs and constraints to locating a Costco warehouse store. And Conki actively negotiated key financial terms with Costco for an option to ground lease and ground lease. Conki also submitted pre-development application in June of 2013 and the initial project application and environmental questionnaire in October 2013. These negotiations have resulted in key business and financial terms that are being presented to your Board today for consideration. Consistent with your Board's direction and policy to negotiate terms which are market-based and consistent with private sector leasing practices, staff recommends the following key business and financial terms to be included in the option to ground lease and the ultimate ground lease with Costco. The first agreement is the option to ground lease, which provides a 30 months with two six-months options to provide time for Costco to perform, to receive its environmental review approvals and entitlements to construct the Costco project. The ground lease term would be 20 years with three 10-year options to extend. The rent would be $325,000 annually with 10% rent escalations every 10 years. This rent is based on an appraisal that was performed in May 2012, which derived a fee value for the property at $4,880,000 for the unentitled land. This appraiser converted that value into a rental rate, annual rental rate, using a 9% rate of return, yielding an annual rate rent of $440,000 a year. This appraisal was used as the starting point for negotiations with Costco. And like other private sector transactions, the negotiations took into consideration factors, other factors before agreeing to the rent or reaching the proposed rental rate. For example, a consideration is to Costco being a quality tenant, and that derives usually a better value to the landowner for a less risk over the term of the lease. The creditworthiness and financial credit capability. Whether or not the tenant is an anchor tenant is important as well, in that it will increase demand for the surrounding properties and actually increase the value for those surrounding properties, and then the values of the improvements that are being constructed. The current interest rate at the time, rent escalations, and other offsite improvements are also factored in. Therefore, it was concluded that the negotiated rent of $325,000 was appropriate, which is derived by using a 6.7 rate of return. This is based on this particular retailer and those factors that I described earlier. It's also noted that ground leases are not as common, or much less common, than fee title appraisals, and therefore, it's very hard to find comparables for the rates of return that's appropriate for this type of transaction. The ground lease rental would commence a year after the ground lease is in effect or upon Costco's opening for business, whichever is earlier. There are rent credits going to Costco for extraordinary costs, up to $1 million, and that would be spread out over the first 10 years in $100,000 annual increments. This is similar to the Home Depot transaction, where Home Depot received extraordinary cost credits for grading retaining wall construction and other offsite improvements that they incurred. Costco's above and beyond development costs include removal and relocation of internal utilities, including the main water loop serving the Government Center; construction of infrastructure due to inadequate water pressure in order to meet fire load requirements; encasing the NID canal, constructing retaining walls to address grade differentials and construct roadway improvements. Several of these improvements will provide later benefits to subsequent development for government and commercial purposes. Costco would also receive a rent credit for demolition and environmental remediation costs it incurred when involved with demolishing the existing buildings. The County reserves the right to do this demolition during the option period if it deems that that's appropriate, however. And Costco will pay the County $650,000 as consideration for the four county occupied buildings that are being impacted by the Costco project as well. And this is not covering the entire cost to reconstruct these facilities for these county departments, however, it's looked as an opportunity to find, to relocate these departments in more, into less, to more appropriate facilities that address their programmatic requirements. The Costco project also impacts many of our private tenants. There are 10 private tenants that are longstanding at the Government Center. They've been tenants for most of the tenure that Mary described, and we understand that this is a great impact to them, this project holds. It's a big change for them, and it takes some time to adjust to. So, you know, what we've tried to do is provide advance notice to the tenants as early as last June to notify them of the pending Costco project, to provide some services and supports to them to find relocation or new facilities to move to, and try to be very flexible about their lease terms, providing waiver of last month's rent if need be, and offering them to go into holdover or re-terminate their leases should they need to, should they need to, and find some other facility. One such occupant is our senior center, the multi-purpose senior center. They've been in the facilities at the Government Center for over 30 years. They provide an important service to the community, to a vulnerable population, out of a very unique facility, which includes a hall and two of the former DeWitt barracks or hospital wings, I guess you could call it. So, in consideration of that, we were able to negotiate consideration from Costco for up to $530,000 to help fund a replacement location for the seniors. We believe that about 8,000 square feet could accommodate their needs and have identified opportunities for them to lease facilities, which would involve some tenant improvements. So included in that $530,000 is tenant improvements of about, up to $200,000. Should we not reach an option to ground lease or Costco being unable to enter into the ground lease, the County would have to reimburse Costco for those costs. Some of our tenants intend to move as early as the summer or fall, and others are talking about relocating in December. There are still some that are waiting for more definitive information on timing, and we are committed to providing them updates as to the status of the Costco project and continue to work with them on what they need to assist in their relocation. Collectively, the fiscal terms of the Costco deal is projected to exceed $20 million, 20 and a half million over 20 years for the initial term. That includes rent, sales tax, and in lieu property taxes. This is net of the costs associated with replacement of the impacted county facilities and the credits for extraordinary costs and offset by the lost rents that we will have as a result of the Costco project. And the revenues over the 50-year term is expected to exceed $87 million. Thank you.
The key to continuing these negotiations with Costco to affect the financial terms that Lori has just described is approval of a proposed real estate lease services and development agreement with Mr. Conki. This development agreement is needed to end Mr. Conki's intermediary role in negotiations of the ground lease agreements. This structural change in the negotiations will eliminate any delay due to third-party negotiations and potential inconsistencies within the terms. When the County entered into its exclusive negotiating agreement with Mr. Conki back in 2011, it was anticipated that he would enter into an option to ground lease and ground lease with Costco. He would perform the environmental and entitlement processes for a Costco warehouse store. Thereafter, Mr. Conki would lease the bare ground from the County at its unentitled value and sublease the leasehold interest back to Costco. As this project has progressed, Costco has expressed its need to play an active role in the environmental and entitlement processes and in order to manage timelines, expenses, and potential project impacts and mitigations. As a result, the County and Conki have agreed that it would be most beneficial to the project if his intermediary role in the negotiations and the future ground lease were eliminated. Staff believes that Mr. Conki has contributed a significant value to the County as a result of his role to date and is due compensation for facilitating the Costco transaction. At his own risk and expense, he has secured Costco's commitment to pursue development at the Placer County Government Center by taking a leadership role to market and foster a relationship with key Costco representatives. He's paid the consideration to the County for the exclusive right to negotiate. He's performed critical due diligence activities that verified the suitability of the site for a Costco warehouse club store. He's addressed development issues, including water pressure, building demolition, and relocation. He's negotiated the cost-effective environmental review process with the Environmental Consultant and the Community Development Resource Agency. He's negotiated the business terms for the option and a lease agreement that were presented by Lori and concurred to by staff. And he's provided valuable assistance by addressing industry and development-related questions as requested by the County. Upon your Board's approval of a development agreement, Conki would be compensated $150,000 for his efforts to date. Additional payments up to $787,500 would be payable and are conditioned upon the achievement of specific performance milestones, including the execution of an option and ground lease between the County and Costco, receipt of entitlements for the project and building permits, ground lease execution, and ultimately store opening. The accomplishment of each one of these milestones brings the County closer to a greater opportunity for certainty towards the ultimate Costco store opening. It realizes the increase in land value as a result of the environmental and approval processes, and provides the opportunity, in the event that Costco does not exercise its right to ground lease, that the County could market the land at a higher value for entitled property that would be particularly valuable to a like-type retailer. And if the milestones are not achieved, then Conki would not receive payment for that milestone or any successive milestones. To facilitate negotiations with Costco, approval of a site access and negotiation agreement, a negotiating agreement is recommended. This agreement will provide assurances for a specific timeline wherein the County and Costco will negotiate on an exclusive basis. That term has been established as four months with one four-month option to extend. And what we would be doing during that period would be to negotiating the terms that Lori has outlined, as well as the whole myriad of terms that would be embodied in a full option to lease agreement and a lease agreement. There is no commitment on your Board's part at this point to agree to that. Ultimately, upon completion of those negotiations and satisfaction at the staff level and with Costco's representatives, that those documents would be returned to your Board for your ultimate review and approval, as well as Costco's executive review and approval as well.
Mary, just to clarify that last point, so what you're saying in a nutshell, and I know there may be some questions with regards to this, by entering the site access and negotiating agreement, we're not mobilizing the bulldozers or anything like that. We're just agreeing to agree and negotiate, correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, go ahead.
That's absolutely correct. And again, it memorializes our commitment to enter into those agreements in a formalized way. The site access and negotiating agreement being considered by your Board only authorizes us to negotiate these terms, and as I noted, they will be brought back to you for your final approval. And as such, this action is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to Section 15306, which is information collection. The approval of the development agreement with Conki is not considered a project pursuant to CEQA Section 15378A, since the agreement sets forth compensation terms that have no foreseeable impact to the environment. And just for your information, the site access and development agreements have been made available for review through the Clerk of the Board's Office, and I think were provided to each one of your Board members. In the future, Costco's ability to exercise any ground lease agreement or rights to develop the project are subject to independent environmental review under CEQA, and it's anticipated and planned that they would be performing an EIR, which would be processed through the Community Development Resource Agency. Through that process, there'll be ample opportunity for public review and comment on the project assured through that land development process. So in conclusion, it's staff's recommendation that, given the anticipated revenues from rent, sales tax, property tax, as well as the draw for other retail and commercial developments on this second, seven-acre site on Willow Creek Road, that we recommend your Board's approval of the development agreement, site access and negotiating terms, and the terms that were presented to your Board. And we are available to answer any questions that you may have.
And I think your last point with regards to the environmental review is very pertinent here, because I, from what I've heard, there's a misunderstanding exactly when the public process starts and when, you know, what's next, and will there be an opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed project? So that's, it's good to hear that those lines of communication and that transparency is going to take place moving forward. I'm going to go to my first comment, supervisor Montgomery.
I'm sorry, I actually left my light on from my side.
Oh, okay. Then I'll bring it back to the Board for any questions at this time, and then we'll open it up to the public. Okay. I know there are probably quite a few folks that want to speak. I'm going to have you line up in the middle here, please, if you would, because we want to get through this, you know, as expeditiously as we can. And go ahead and please step forward, state your name. And go ahead and please step forward, state your name, your address, and then you can let us know your concern.
Okay. My name is Renee Berg. I'm the facilitator for the Save DeWitt Theater Steering Committee. I currently actually live in Nevada County. I was here for years, but, and I will get back here, but I do not live in Auburn at this point. We would like, as the committee for Save DeWitt Theater, we'd like to see the DeWitt Theater taken off of Costco's site plan before the ground lease terms are even considered by the board. Second, there have been some very misleading statements made by county representatives as to the condition of DeWitt Theater. It is quite interesting that these people have shown us no proof of their claims. We have asked for any reports that have been done on the theater, and those requests have been ignored. Third, if the EIR takes eighteen months or however long to complete, what kind of guarantees can the community expect that DeWitt Theater will not be torn down during this process? Music &amp; More Arts Academy's lease expires November of this year, and then will revert to a month-to-month. Can you guarantee that this community cultural asset will not be needlessly torn down before the historical significance is determined through the EIR process? Who knows, there may even be Indian artifacts beneath the DeWitt property, or Costco may abandon the project. Why needlessly destroy a community asset? Finally, all of the performances that Music &amp; More put on require three to six months of lead time in order to secure the rights to use the materials for a show at a non-refundable cost of twenty-five hundred to four thousand dollars. If Music &amp; More go on a month-to-month lease during the EIR process, how can they plan for future shows? They would lose significant money. Their business would go under. Thank you.
Sure. And I would direct you to speak with our Facility Services Director, Ms. Dietrich. Those are very pertinent, valid questions, and she could probably give you some insight on those.
Thank you.
Chairman Duran and members of the Board of Supervisors, good morning. My name is Richard J. Ramirez, and I am the interim city manager for the City of Auburn. At the direction of Mayor Powers and the Auburn City Council, the Auburn City Attorney will be sending a letter today to County Council with respect to Item Seven, Costco lease at DeWitt Center. In summary, the council respectfully disagrees with the finding of staff that the proposed action to approve the SANA is categorically exempt under CEQA. In an attempt to avoid conducting an environmental review, project splitting, or the act of making an actual project smaller in an effort to expedite and rush to action a project, in fact violates the intent and purpose of CEQA. The lease is, in fact, an essential part of a larger project, a project that will have significant environmental impacts on the City of Auburn and will disrupt cultural resources. The mayor and city council urges the board not to proceed on taking action on an environmental finding that may not be bulletproof with respect to CEQA compliance. Instead, postpone entering into a lease until a proper environmental review can occur, identifying all impacts and potential mitigations. At a minimum, rather than move forward on an action that may be procedurally flawed, allow the board to become more familiar with what the court has said about project splitting by having county staff return with an analysis on the practice. Prudence would urge the board to move slowly now, to move faster later.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board and Mr. Holmes in particular for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Michael Coder. I'm from the historic DeWitt Theater, Building three one five, eleven five nine six D Avenue. I am part of a growing coalition of business professionals, artists, parents, and young people who are attempting to preserve the historic DeWitt Theater as a cultural and historic resource. The Save the DeWitt Theater is supported by the nonprofit organization Music &amp; More Performing and Visual Arts Incorporated, which was established in two thousand and one to promote the study, to promote the study and advancement of visual and performing arts and its related history, which fits in quite well with the DeWitt Theater in Article Three. We are all concerned that in the report before you, there are no words mentioning any historical or cultural value to DeWitt Center and the vintage buildings to be destroyed. And the entire proposal deals with how much money is to be made by Placer County as a quote "economic driver." As a part of the Placer County Environmental Impact Report in the March and April of August of two thousand and two, and here's a copy of it, actually, two thousand and two, Archaeological Resources Historical Archaeological Survey, and the DeWitt Center Existing Conditions Report, Administrative Historic Architectural Survey for DeWitt Center, Auburn, Placer County. It was reported that the DeWitt Center property does have a lot of history and appears to be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places under criteria A and C at the national and local levels of significance and the California Register of Historical Resources under criteria one and three. This report didn't even mention the nineteen ninety-eight archaeological report conducted fifty yards from Richardson Drive that discovered over two thousand artifacts from the eighteen seventy gold rush period and the house of the gold miner that Bell rode his name for, who owned the three hundred and twenty acres that DeWitt Center stands on. Yet, a year later, as the proposal before you points out, December two thousand and three, the board at that time certified the DeWitt Government Center Facility Plan EIR, which led to the construction of the Community Development Resource Building, the Auburn Justice Center, and two shelter facilities. And as one of the stated objectives of the project was to remove aged, outdated, potentially hazardous building inventory from the complex and provide for the demolition of the original nineteen forty-three vintage buildings. The question becomes, how did DeWitt Center become unhistorical in one year, and why? Again, on March thirtieth, two thousand and four, a temporary acting state historical preservation officer from the Department of Parks and Recreation made a report for the board regarding the modernization and expansion of the DeWitt Government Center based on his archaeological record search conducted at CSUS and a pedestrian survey of the property where, interestingly enough, he discovered historical Native American Indian motor cup, mortar cup artifacts and recommended further research. And I just discovered this morning that that was also discovered in two thousand and two, as part of that report. And this research was apparently never done. He signed off at the end of his report recommending that DeWitt Center lacks sufficient integrity materials, workmanship, and feeling associated with its historic period of significance to warrant NRHP designation at a national level of significance. One wonders what happened to any further research on the Indian artifacts. Is there a Native American Indian village or bones under DeWitt Center? Overall, the environmental impact reports are inconsistent in their historical reporting of the land and the theater. In summary, we request the board reconsider the demolition of the DeWitt Center, as well as the chapel, arranging in some way to preserve them for their cultural and historical value to Placer County and the residents of Auburn. A community theater is more than a building. It is a precious cultural resource. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ray Thompson. I live in Auburn, California. I'm here representing myself, but also I'm a member of the Native Sons of the Golden West. They were founded in eighteen seventy-six, a historical organization on the premise of preservation and restoration of California's history. Today, I will address the preservation of that history. I'm not necessarily representing the Native Sons today. I'm representing myself as a member of the Native Sons. Tonight, we have a meeting, and this will be brought before them for some resolution, whether pro or con, on not so much the building of Costco, but the present footprint that has been proposed. The DeWitt Army Hospital, for Auburn's purposes, was our shining light for our participation in World War II. Any other artifacts left from World War II in the Auburn area, correct me if I'm wrong, I've been searching my brain trying to figure out if there are any left that would be of significant historical value based on the historical value of World War II. Buildings worn out, seventy years old, reached their livelihood. Granted, that may be the case, but we can't use that as a premise because we would be tearing down buildings left and right, or destroying historical sites left and right. The Native Sons of the Golden West was instrumental in preserving Sutter's Fort. When Sutter's Fort was preserved and saved for today's generations, it was, somewhere in the vicinity of fifty years old at the time the Native Sons got involved with that. The Native Sons got involved with Coloma State Park. At the time they got involved, this was early in the nineteen hundreds. Coloma State Park, geez, did it have historical significance? Sure. But it was less than fifty, sixty, seventy years old at the time. Donner State Park, the Donner Party, Native Sons was instrumental in keeping that piece of property of historical significance. Was it a hundred years old? Was it two hundred years old? No, it wasn't. It was relatively young by comparison. Here we are, a hundred and fifty and sixty years later. Thank goodness for the Native Sons for having preserved those things. Now granted, this hospital didn't play the significance that those other previously mentioned sites did, but for Auburn's particular purposes, it is our shining light. It's what we have from World War II. Saving the theater for the sake of cultural considerations, very important. I brought up, I've been to one of their meetings, and I brought up with the steering committee that if the theater were preserved and nothing else were preserved around it as a buffer zone, you would end up with asphalt and parking lot lights right up next to your setbacks.
You can summarize or...
Summarizer, yes. We need more property. We need the chapel. We need a few of the barracks, possibly the senior center. Costco has already come up with a five hundred thousand dollar donation to remove the senior center, relocate it, geez, use that money to restore those buildings. A portion of that corner there could become the shining light, could become the historical site for DeWitt Army Hospital and Auburn's participation in that war. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mister Chairman, members of the board, my name is Bart Rude. I reside at eight four three Sierra View Circle in Auburn. I'm reflecting on the fact that fifty-six years ago, when I was about twelve years old, I came before the Board of Supervisors for Placer County, and I have spoken from time to time since then, and that lends itself to transparency in government, and that's what we're talking about today. We're talking about transparency and honesty. And at this point in time, I would have to think that government is for the people, and I have seen, I think, a lack of transparency. I've asked questions, others have asked questions, about the opportunity to learn something about what has been going on in the negotiation process here in Placer County with principles of Costco Corporation. And all we have been told is that, well, these are in negotiations, we cannot speak to them. That seems, if you will, to kind of take away the opportunity for people to have the transparency that we seek in government, and that is a disappointment. It almost as if it's the will of the government, rather than the will of the people, to carry us forward as we move and see development come into our community. So I would suggest that if the board could slow down just a little bit, it would be absolutely wonderful if its legacy could be something like doing good for our community beyond our lifetime. And that would speak to the preservation of these buildings at DeWitt, and it would speak certainly to the DeWitt Theater, and it would speak to the post chapel. My aunt worked at DeWitt when it was the state, when it was the Army Hospital. She was a personnel director for civilian employees. My grandparents had a dairy near Camp Flint here, and they provided the dairy products for that. So I have a little bit of heritage, although the war was almost over when I was born. I guess it was over. But my history and my care about my community and our community goes way back. So I would ask for a sense of collaboration, if you will, spread amongst the many who are interested. There are a lot of stakeholders. The county is a stakeholder. Certainly, the Costco Corporation is a stakeholder. The principles of the theater are stakeholders. The principles of the post chapel are stakeholders, and there are a great many other stakeholders in our community that we can't necessarily illuminate today. But I have seen maps, and it looks as if there would be demolition of the theater for a few parking spots. And I would submit that there is a way that Costco can come out ahead as a winner of support in our community for recognizing what is a cultural heritage and a historic heritage, if you will, with a simple redesign of a parking lot and an incorporation of what we have in our community with DeWitt as we go forward. And I would ask then that we slow down the process and allow public input. Thank you very much for your time and for your interest in what we have here.
Hello. I, my name is John Prodiva, and I live in Meadow Vista. I have cerebral, I have cerebral apathy. Due to my condition, I can't do team sports like my sister and most of the other kids my age. However, I can do drama. And to me, tearing down this theater would be a lot like taking away the only kid's sports field in town. Please don't tear down the DeWitt Theater.
Thank you.
My name is Rebecca Fuller. My parents moved to Placer County in nineteen fifty-three and raised my siblings and I in Placer County. I love Placer County. My husband and I chose to raise our daughters in Auburn for the quality of life here. One of the most important assets of the quality of life in Auburn for us is the Music &amp; More Arts Academy. Our daughters have attended there most of their lives. Our younger daughter started there as a baby in arms. This theater is part of who they are, part of who we are, and it would be such a loss to lose this theater. There must be somewhere else that Costco can be cited in Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lisa Lindgren. I actually live on Atwood. It would be that little speck on the right-hand side in the corner. I haven't heard any mention of traffic control. As it is now, there is a lot of traffic from the county buildings and other things like that. I grew up in a small town in Vashry, Louisiana, and I brought my kids here for that small-town atmosphere. Everyone that I have met in this town has either grown up or moved here at a very young age. You don't find very many young families in the Auburn area because it's so expensive. We bought a house just this last year, and I can't imagine the average family that may work at Costco can afford that. So I find that a lot of the employees will be coming out of the Auburn area, which is also going to create more traffic on forty-nine. I don't know if you're very familiar with Atwood and forty-nine light, but it's not a great idea, that area. So I'm asking you to give my kids the opportunity to have the small-town atmosphere and grow up here without corporate America in Auburn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Amy Bodick, and I am an actor at Music &amp; More Theater. I'm going to be perfectly honest with everybody in this room. I am much like my buddy John here. Not in the fact that I can't do sports, but the fact that I've never really belonged anywhere in life. And at Music &amp; More, I belong. I love acting. It's where I decided, yes, I want to go into this crazy business. I want to be an actress. And I have met some of my most wonderful friends there. And I am speaking from the point of view of the actors that go there. It's a wonderful, wonderful place. You really bond, and the Coders are such wonderful people. They provide us with this opportunity. And my father brought up a very good point to me the other day that this is not just a theater, it's child development. It's keeping kids off the streets. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing for the community and for the children, and I'm speaking for myself and anyone in this room with kids. So thank you for your time. Please do not tear down our wonderful, wonderful little spot of heaven here in Auburn.
Thank you.
Good morning again, my name again is Jonathan Lancaster, and all of you should be ashamed of yourselves. The elephant in the room here is by virtue of Placer County Government owning the DeWitt Center, Placer County is a big-box retail developer masquerading as a government, and you have a huge, huge conflict of interest in even being involved in this issue. When I worked in Sun Microsystems in Silicon Valley, we would have called this a brother-in-law deal. Supervisor Euler's brother-in-law was given an exclusive deal to negotiate this, and when I Google his name, I find about a dozen or twenty or thirty businesses at the address where he's doing his real estate and development and what have you. I'd like to know who's going to build Costco. I've got so many questions, I don't even know where to start, but all of you should recuse yourself from this decision completely because there's culture involved here, there's citizens involved. We are not a government of the corporations, by the corporations, for the corporations. I'd remind you, we are a government of the people, by the people, for the people. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
Sure.
We also need to be a government of the facts, and just for the record, I have three brothers, so the brother-in-law thing has me a little thrown here. I have, excuse me, sir.
Mr. Lancaster.
I have two sisters-in-law, and the only brother-in-law that I have is by virtue of marriage. My wife's sister's husband, he works for the city of Roseville. So I don't know what you think you're pretending to portray in this audience as fact, but it's complete fiction.
Mr. Lancaster, I'm going to ask that this side conversation stop, okay? And I'm going to ask that the public maintain decorum in this, in this room. Please come forward.
Thanks, that's a tough act to call. Anyway, my name is Tina Anderson, I'm on, here on behalf of O'Brien Child Development Center, which is one of the tenants of Placer County. All we, we are, we're a daycare center, so we have over thirty children that we provide care for, most of which of our parents are supported by our county. So with that, we were just asking that if this does go through and we have to relocate, if we could maybe get funds to help rebuild our playground, maybe back, or lease doesn't end until February two thousand fifteen, so maybe we could get compensated for that. So that's all I'm saying. I welcome Costco, I think we need change, Auburn's a great community, I've been here for over thirty-eight years. I also went to DeWitt Theater to watch movies the first time when I was ten years old, so I'm for DeWitt staying. I do believe that the theater is important for our community as a monument, but also we do need to move along. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michael Murphy, architect, live in Auburn, done a lot of buildings around here. Mr. Chairman, fellow supervisors, thank you for listening. I'm here kind of reporting for the DeWitt Theater. I've helped the steering committee and kind of reviewed the building itself, and it's been alluded that the, the buildings out here are kind of worthless, ready to be torn down, non-reinforced. Well, that's not the truth on a DeWitt Theater. It's a reinforced building, built well, hardly any defects in it, has a lot longer life left into it. I've looked at the worst buildings, like the old Shanghai, Auburn Ale House, the old Auburn Hotel, Tassuta's, an old town, all unreinforced brick, unreinforced concrete, and they're still standing, and we were able to bring them back to life, new life. So in evaluating that building, I don't think it's a negative, I think you're looking at probably a building worth right now as it stands, half million, three-quarter million dollars. So that's an asset for the county. It's about five thousand feet, it's in good shape, and before you just destroy that, I think you ought to be compensated for it. I really do. I think, and I'm not addressing its use, it's a viable building and daily use, it's a very interesting building. Architecturally, it's minor significance, but that building and some of the other areas would make a beautiful heritage park right around it. So all I would ask you to do is make allowances for the building and its little surrounding area, allocate some parking somewhere else on your site that doesn't have you tear down a half million, three-quarter million dollars' worth of assets just for that building, and destroy a lifestyle of culture and history that has, everybody has become used to enjoying. So I would ask you to, when you're looking at your lease, ask them to keep the theater. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Eleanor Petuski, I'm in Jim Holmes District, and I'm from Newcastle, and I've been listening to this, I'm kind of here to represent certainly the senior center, because I am one, and the DeWitt Theater and the post chapel. I think all of them should be preserved. I sit here and listen that staff has determined, Conkey LLC has determined, Costco is a quality tenant, Costco gets rent credits, and on and on and on, and I don't support this determination. I think that the senior center is a good tenant, I think that the theater is a good tenant. This piece of Auburn is the heart and soul of the senior community, and the theater supports a lot of great stuff for kids and for adults, but the seniors, you know, kids are vulnerable because you have to help them along. Seniors are vulnerable also. As we get older, we need services, all kinds of services, and I for one have been extremely impressed with the range of services that this senior community provides. Seniors first, it used to have meals on wheels, now it has, I don't know, frozen food or something that's delivered, but they have, they come out and help people, put up, get, they help people who are going through surgery, they have equipment that they loan to people, they have people that come in and help seniors when they need it, take them to doctor's appointments, they have exercise programs, art programs, they have breakfast, they have, it brings people together. Seniors kind of are out of contact, and this place allows them to have contact with other people and to get the services they need, play cards, play games, whatever. There's even a barber shop quartet over there. I mean, it just goes on and on and on, and unless you participate, you don't know. I go to a discussion group on Wednesday afternoons to discuss current events. I love it, it's all a bunch of seniors. All I can say is that it is a big mistake to eliminate this. Costco is a big-box store. I like Costco, I shop at Costco. Costco can go anywhere, and I think you're tearing out the heart of community to put in another big box, and I think it's a big, big, big mistake, and I'm very much.
Good morning, my name is Don Mooney, I'm an attorney and I represent Tom Dwell, and I sent a letter to the board, and I just want to confirm that the clerk received my letter and the board received my letter. Thank you. I want to concur in, concur in the comments, as my letter indicates, would concur in the comments made by the city of Auburn. This is project splitting, it's piecemealing under SEQA. You are making decisions, especially with the option and ground lease, you are making decisions about the project that will affect your ability and discretion when it comes to alternatives and mitigation. You're making determinations about the term of the lease, the location of the project, the size of the project, the, the, the amount of the lease, all, all matters, the removal of certain buildings, all matters that are approvals, the early approvals of a project. And SEQA clearly requires that environmental review be conducted at the earliest stage, and what you're doing is you're making commitments by the county as to the project, you're making those commitments to Costco through an agreement, and then you're doing the environmental review, and that's putting the cart before the horse. And SEQA clearly does not allow that, there is, there is case law, save Tara, case, there's other cases that clearly indicate that you need to do the SEQA prior to the project, prior to approvals of the project, even if there is just some of the preliminary approvals. Entering into a ground, a ground lease constitutes a preliminary approval of the project, it requires SEQA, and I would urge you to not approve the proposal by staff and conduct the environmental review prior to entering into any kind of lease that would limit your ability with regards to alternatives, mitigation, and environmental review. That includes doing matters such as traffic studies, other types of environmental studies that, that, that you need to make your decision, that the public needs to make a decision. And one of the key things that's important to remember of what an EIR is, an EIR is an informational document. It's an informational document, not just for the decision-makers, the Board of Supervisors, but it's also an informational document for the public. So the public knows what the potential impacts are, what are potential alternatives, what are feasible alternatives, what are feasible mitigation measures. So all of that information is laid out to the public and to the decision-makers before there is a commitment of resources, before there is a commitment towards moving forward with the project. And what you're doing is you're limiting the environmental review, you're limiting, you're limiting the amount, limiting information to the public and information to yourselves prior to making your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Andreas Hoffman, I'm one of the tenants in the DeWitt Center. I have the bakery bloodlust by Hoffman's for the last thirty-five years in the same place. Due to the Costco project, we now forced to find another location. As you all know, the economy is not that great right now, so it's a big burden on us to find another location, get it ready, health department, new regulations, everything else, and I want to make you aware that we employ three other families, we have a lot of other suppliers, and due to this Costco project, we are forced to move out. It's not easy for us just to go in another location, we have to have a location prepared, and as of now, we didn't get any help directly from the county or any offerings where to go, what to do, and how to do it. I hope you consider we employ other members and other families from Auburn, and consider that we support the community too, we donations, and then all the stuff we do. Thank you. Sorry, a little nervous, but thank you.
You did well, thank you.
Good morning, I'm Bill Betancourt, principal at Placer School for Adults here in Auburn. You're doing hard work, I want to mention that and appreciate that for what you're doing, and I also want to appreciate the comments from the audience. A lot of, a lot of things are being expressed that, I didn't even plan to be here today until I heard about the five hundred and thirty thousand dollars being offered to the senior center, and then I thought, well, hold the bus. A lot of folks have contributed to the success of the seniors, of the DeWitt Center over the years. When I just do a quick calculation, and probably not quite as accurate as I'd like to have, but we used to have four classrooms there, currently we have two. Just calculating today's lease fees times four buildings for twenty years, I would say that Placer School for Adults, Placer Union High School District has contributed about one point two million dollars in rent. And then calculate that over a period of time, it may not have been that much twenty years ago, thirty years ago, but in today's dollars, I would just calculate quickly about one point two million. We offer classes for the seniors, senior citizens, some activities there that everyone in the room has expressed value in. Older adults, we used to have a program there with our budget cuts, we've had to reduce that, we're down to two buildings now. We used to have a program for adults with disabilities and a vision impaired class as well, and things have just reduced over time. And our best years was when we were able to afford the lease that we are in now. With state funding, it's changed significantly for education and for adult ed in particular, and our best days are behind us. We have to look at funding our own building, our own instructional program based on fees, so we've had to increase fees over the years. Everyone in the room, aside from so many things that have been mentioned, the heritage, the history, so many factors, one of the things I hope you're considering, not just for the senior center, but even the bakery and others, to relocate is going to be a hardship, to find a place, and we're, we're working in good faith, moving ahead, trying to find a place. No matter where we go, we'll probably have to do some improvements to the building. So not only is the senior center worthy of support and remuneration of some kind, I think it would be appreciated. I'm searching for words, I didn't, I didn't script out anything, so this is extemporaneous, I apologize, but every agency there, every, every program, every business will face some hardships in relocation. So I just wanted to bring that forward if it hasn't been mentioned yet, or if you hadn't already considered it, and I, and I say that carefully and respectfully because you've thought of a lot of things, more than I can mention, and so I don't want to in any way disrespect that, but anyway, thank you for your time today.
Thank you. And I'm going to cut off the public comment after this young lady back there.
My name is Roger Perkins, and I live in Auburn, North Auburn. First moved here in nineteen fifty-nine, so I know a little bit about the history of the, of this DeWitt Center that we're talking about. I was chorus director of the first barber shop quartet chorus group, and we performed there in nineteen sixty-two when it was a mental hospital, and the people loved it. And since then, a new barber shop chorus started in nineteen eighty-three, one of the founders was Bruce Cosgrove, I think you all know Bruce at the Chamber, and I started directing that chorus thirty years ago, so you know I'm getting old. Anyway, we, we have been using the senior center for our plays for rehearsing for about fifteen years, and the Sweet Adeline chorus also meets there, and it was my quartet that practices there Wednesday afternoon, so anyway, my chorus has put on shows at the DeWitt Center, and it's been a great facility for us, and my wife and I go to the plays that the, the young people do there, and I just have to say one thing, Neil Diamond said, "Money talks, but it don't sing and dance, and it don't walk."
Morning, my name is Mildred Livingston, I live in North Auburn, a few blocks away, maybe half a mile from the DeWitt Center, and I just wanted to have you all reconsider and put aside the demolition that's happening, and to also note that, as a personal note, that I have directed and produced some activities at not only the senior center, but with the theater, and brought poignant and educational programs in a play at the DeWitt Theater, and this is something that Auburn needs, in some place, somewhere, there has to be a place, and that's what I love about Auburn, because I have a place here, and I am very active in local politics and the community. So I ask you all to reconsider, think about what we're doing, let's have a plan, let's have a public input, I'm not going to repeat what everyone else has said, because you all know how we feel, and I just beg your indulgence, and thanks for listening.
Thank you.[1795.11]
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Herman Gallegos. I'm an employee of Seniors First in Auburn. I first wanted to say that I think it's great news for the senior center that they've, that you've negotiated some help for them. Unfortunately, there's a lot more tenants at the DeWitt Center than just the senior center, mine for one, and several others that are here. So I'm just asking you today, you know, I don't think anybody's going to stand in the way of Costco, but I just wanted you to consider that, you know, that there's other tenants in the DeWitt Center that are, for example, my agency is a nonprofit. We serve senior meals and give senior rides, and we're going to have to take some of those funds away from senior services in order to fund our move. And I just want you to consider possibly, if there's any more negotiations in the future for funding to assist us moving, anybody moving, that you would consider the other tenants of the DeWitt Center also, please. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to close off public comment after this young lady speaks.
Hi. My name is Anna Pogansky. I forgot to tell you last time, I do live in Auburn. I am with the Saved DeWitt Theater, proud of it. I became a student of Music &amp; More Arts Academy at age eleven. I stayed with them until the age of eighteen. And I went to Sierra College, went on to do the music department there. Go back a second. At Music &amp; More, I was not able to do my full payment for my lessons, so I bartered for my voice lessons. I then took girls choir, acting classes. I was in musicals and showcases. I was an apprentice for miniature musicians. My youngest brother is twenty-one. He is serving in the United States Marine Corps. He served in Afghanistan. He was a student of theirs. Music has made a huge impact in his life, and it is great for reducing stress. He took violin through them and started out in miniature musicians. He signed the petition to get the word across to you how important the theater is. I, along with hundreds of thousands of students, have been a part of Music &amp; More Arts Academy and the arts of our community. And I do thank you for your work that you do for us, but we really need this part of Auburn. And it not only affects Auburn, it affects all the communities around us. And I have performed as a musician from all the different things I've done throughout life, the National Anthem for Auburn twice, patriotic music. I've sung at the California State Capitol for four years, missing one year when my brother came back from Afghanistan. I've sung for Congressman of Clinton Talk and the Nevada County chapter of the Republicans. And I've sung for other political parties and businesses and organizations. Music &amp; More Arts Academy has given me huge confidence over the years. I learned to work for them in the arts. I went on to Sierra College. I worked in the music department for numerous college professors. Then I went on to five music programs in the Midwest where I received full scholarship for singing. We toured across the U.S. for those. We did premieres, actually did premieres with Music &amp; More as well. And then I went on to college in Minnesota where I performed in two choirs there. And I toured to Portugal and Spain and toured and represented the United States as a music ambassador. While there, I also noted going on tours and touring buildings that were old and historic. And I remember many of the tour guides saying, "Ha, ha, you know, you don't have buildings as old as us, and you don't preserve your history as much as us, but we do care about our history here, and we want it preserved." I'm lucky to go on a field trip with my nephew later this week to Coloma and talking about how that was mentioned earlier. And I would look forward for our children to be able to go on field trips to the DeWitt Theater, which they actually already do. So thank you so much for thinking about delaying this process and putting in some more resources and research. And we all like Costco. It's not that we don't want it, but we just want to make sure that history's preserved, and it's almost done. But the DeWitt Theater is a Florence Nightingale design, which many people do not know. We had Martin Ramirez, who was an artist who, just this last year, was conducted into the Library of Congress. He was a supposed mental patient, but they don't think he actually was. But his work is in the Library of Congress. There is numerous history. Bob Hope performed on that stage. I could go on and on. I'm learning a lot. So I just want you to dive into the history, get excited about this area, and see why we're so excited about keeping the arts alive. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for your comments and your passion about this particular item. I'm now going to bring this back to the board of supervisors for comments and questions. Supervisor Holt.
Thanks. I have a couple of comments. First of all, the chapel's been mentioned, and I don't think that's part of the, we didn't have any plans with the chapel or?
I apologize for not making that clear. The chapel is not part of the project that would be, or any of the buildings that would be affected by the Costco project.
Okay. And I would recommend that we don't touch the chapel and perhaps have some kind of facility that could have a museum with some of the, you know, the historical significance of the Army Hospital and the mental hospital. I was raised there. I lived right, my folks' property went right up against DeWitt Center, so I know the history very well. Traffic, one lady talked about the traffic on Atwood and everything. I know that's going to be a concern, but that's going to be addressed in the traffic study. And that's going to be a monumental task to make sure, assure the traffic study and the traffic flow is good. That's going to affect Bell Road, Willow Creek, Atwood certainly, First Avenue. That whole area is going to have to be studied diligently in order to ensure that there is good traffic flow. I wanted to talk about transparency. This issue hasn't been brought up right, you know, in the last six months. This is something that's going on for quite a while. And Supervisor Montgomery and I both have worked with members of the community. We've worked with, I'll start with seniors first. I met with the board president, some of their board members. They're expressed to me that they understood that this was probably going to happen, and they were, they were willing to work with us in order to find another location. I know staff went out and looked at a site. I went with them. We looked at a site over on Loxley Lane. It looks like it's going to work for them. We met with the property manager, and he agreed that they would do some tenant improvements. I actually set up a meeting with the board president and with one of their board members to go down and talk to the owner of that building to make sure that everybody was in agreement, that this was a viable resource for the seniors first and for the owner of the building. And I think they're working together to make that happen. Senior, the senior center, again, Supervisor Montgomery and I have been in countless meetings with community members. We've worked with seniors, the senior center. We actually just, we have a location, and Costco has generously agreed to bring forward $530,000 for tenant improvements and contribute to the rent. I think that that's, again, very generous. I think that's a starting point for a broader, multipurpose, multi-generational community center that we should work on. So we've been transparent throughout this whole process, at least for the last eighteen months or two years. Some of the businesses, the Ms. O'Brien from the Child Development Center, I know you have problems with your, you're concerned about your playground equipment. I would encourage you to apply to First Five because they do those kinds of grants, so you should be in good shape there. But I haven't seen anybody until about the last two or three months from the theater. No one's come to me about theater. No one's come to me about the other businesses over there. And I'm, Supervisor Montgomery and I are both willing to work with them, but I haven't seen anybody come forward until the last, maybe within the last month. And so at this late day, date, I don't know what we're going to be able to do. I'm willing to work with them to find another location. And again, that would be a purpose of a multi-generational, multipurpose community center, where we could have some kind of theater performance group, some type of availability for something like that. So that's all the comments I have right now. And I'd open up to any comments from my colleagues.
Yeah. And along those lines, Jim, when you're talking about a multipurpose facility, you know, outside of this, this employment, I do a lot of work in finance. And I have given some information to my aide, Christina Rivera, with regards to a federal government loan program through the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And the individual that I work with actually literally wrote the book on finance of this particular loan. So, you know, anybody that wants to talk about the possibilities of getting funding under that program, speak to my aide, Christina, and she'll give you the contact for Greg O'Donnell to talk about that. Now Supervisor Montgomery.
Thank you. And I want to begin by echoing some of Supervisor Holmes' comments. It's always a little bit frustrating for me in these public meetings to see so many people come out who I haven't spoken to. And I did have the opportunity to either meet with or speak with, I think, six of the people who spoke today, and it was very useful for me, and I think it was useful for them to have those conversations. I think it's particularly frustrating for me because there are a few folks in the audience who were at a public meeting that I was at just a couple of weeks ago where I said, "The most critical thing you can do if you want to affect the outcome is to have meetings with all the supervisors, then meet with them face to face." Now, I can't speak for the other supervisors, but that didn't happen. And that's frustrating for me because unless I know that there's a problem, that there's an issue, I can't work to help you address it. And it goes for the Child Care Center, it goes for the bakery. When we don't hear from people, honestly, our expectation is you're satisfied with how the process is going. So it's really incumbent upon people. I see people shaking their heads, and I totally get that you're not satisfied, but if we don't hear from you, we don't know that. Yeah. And, you know, that's incredibly frustrating. I get it. But it's probably equally frustrating for members of this board to see all these new faces and hear these, you know, what appear to us to be new issues that are being raised because we haven't heard them until today. It's not a value judgment, it's just sort of how things stand. Just as a little bit of background, my approach to this whole question about Costco coming forward and negotiating the terms has really been based around two things. One is making sure that we maximize benefits to the taxpayers as well as minimizing the impacts. But also the question about, you know, is the county taking advantage of our position as the property owner in negotiating terms to create an unfair competition with private business? So that's really how I've been viewing this process throughout about these last two years. Before I get to my specific concerns about that, one of the things that I did want to mention is that I had asked our Facility Services Department and a few other folks earlier, is, you know, is there a way to reconfigure the parking lot so that the theater would stay? I think there is a way to do that. I don't know if Costco would be willing to do that. I don't know if my fellow board members would be willing to do that. But, you know, it is certainly a question that I think is worth asking and considering. Now, my real caveat on that is if that could be achieved, I think it would be incumbent upon the private entity to take over complete management of that building, do the seismic retrofits, do the upgrades, pay the insurance, pay the liability, do all the management and repair of that building. Because frankly, I don't think it's a legitimate ask to say to the county, "Please underwrite one private business to the detriment of the others." So just as a little bit of background, I do think there's a possibility, but it would really involve Music &amp; More and the folks here in support of Music &amp; More stepping up to fill that role. So in terms of the terms, sorry, use one word in two different fashions there, I have done a little bit of research on my own on the ground lease rates. And I don't actually agree with staff that what's coming forward is an appropriate market rate. I think it's a little low. It's based on conversations I've had with the vice president at CB Richard Ellis, who has experience in big box stores, including ground leasing, some of them. So I'm very concerned about that. I'm very concerned about the 10% increase after ten years. It would go into effect in the eleventh year. The term agreement initially would be twenty years. So what that actually could mean is should Costco decide after, you know, we're coming up on the twenty years that they did not want to renew the lease for the extended periods, Costco would have had the opportunity to operate on that location for twenty years with only a 10% increase. And that concerns me. I don't think that's appropriate. And don't get me wrong, I'm actually a huge fan of Costco. I'm a card-carrying Costco member, shop there a lot, would love to see them. I'm just not convinced that these terms serve either the county or the taxpayers in the county. So I will say that if, after continuing negotiations, some of these concerns are resolved and addressed to my satisfaction, I may very well move forward with supporting the facility there and supporting the agreement. But as things stand today, I'm not going to be able to. So thank you.
All right. I am going to make just some brief comments. You know, I appreciate, again, I appreciate everything that's been said here. I know on a couple of things that were, that were mentioned, you know, government and govern, and people that govern are elected to make decisions. And, you know, there was a comment made with regards to, you know, why there wasn't a whole lot of transparency in the negotiations of this lease. Well, that's kind of a facility of the governmental process. We're now presenting to you those terms of what we realized from those discussions, and that's where you have the opportunity to comment on those. And moving forward, you know, one of the first questions that I did ask of our Facility Services Director is this the end of the road? Are the bulldozers coming in? Are there things coming down? And what was your answer? No? Correct? This is just kind of a starting point for a process that's moving forward that's not going to get completed in six months, but actually take a considerable amount of time to get an EIR done. There's going to be a considerable amount of public input moving forward with regards to the necessary things that are comprised in an EIR. I do share some of the concerns that Supervisor Montgomery has. And a part of that for me is because a lot of the negotiating took place before I ever became on the Board of Supervisors. I have a certain set way of negotiating my things in life. And the agreement as it is, I think we've made a lot of headway. And it is at that point where I think it does pass the smell test for me, at least at this juncture. But that being said, I think there is still a lot of room to have discussions with regards to preserving what can be done to address and talk about the concerns that we have about this, the theater, which I think are important and are going to be very important for our relationship with Costco moving forward. So that's, that's my concern. So that being said, again, the proof is in the pudding moving forward with the EIR and the site plan and all those other kinds of things. There will be opportunity for the public to weigh in on those concerns as they come out or when the NOP comes out to provide commentary on what we should look at or should be some of the things that we look at in the notice of preparation. So that being said, I'm going to bring that back to the board for action that may take. Robert?
Just make a couple of comments too.
Sure. Go ahead.
For the record, so not long after I came to the board, the board did an exhaustive update of our master facilities plan. Kirk and I sat through that. And in it, just so the public knows, there was a lengthy discussion about how much the DeWitt facility site we would need over the long run and even at build-out in the county. And it identified clearly that there would be surplus properties that we would never need, and therefore what should the board do with those properties. So based on some elements that were highlighted here today in our comments, the board directed staff to proceed with using those facilities to the best return for all of the taxpayers of all of the county and not to the benefit of any particular business or group of businesses. We understand and understood from the beginning that there would be some inconveniences and dislocations and issues that we would have to weave our way through as we went through that process over time. And sure enough, here we are. But there is an opportunity in front of us for all of the taxpayers that relates to this release. A couple of key premises that the board way back then directed as it related to staff in terms of policy was that we that we did not want to undercut the market because we thought that would be inappropriate for government, so that our lease should be at market. And if there are arguments to that, I'm concerned about that, and I'm receptive to hearing those arguments as we continue this process. And in addition, if we were going to get into this business of trying to return taxpayers' revenues to them at the highest rate, then we should do it, again, as a business would and to the benefit of all the taxpayers. So I'm open to adding all concerns as we move forward. And I'm open to having conversations about the potential of maybe preserving the theater site, keeping in mind that our preeminent goal here is to make sure that we use the resource that we have to the maximum benefit of the taxpayers of Placer County in total. Thanks.
Anyone else? Supervisor Yula? Okay. I'll go ahead and bring this back for any action the board might want to take.
Mr. Chair, thank you. First of all, I want to say that I did write an editorial some three months ago that was in the Auburn Journal. I forgot to mention that. And I understand the position of the tenants. I was in business for 29 years. I started my business in 1975, worked 12, 14 hours a day. After about three years, the owner of the property at that time came to me and said, "Well, sorry, Jim, but we're going to tear your building down. You're going to have to find another location." And so I put a business plan into place, and actually I found another location. It wasn't easy. I was, you know, still wet behind the ears, but I put something together, and fortunately, it worked out for me. It wasn't easy, but I was able to succeed, and my business remained for 29 years. So I understand the concern and the angst of having to move a business. But in the long run, I'm going to go ahead and support this, and I'd like to make the motion to approve the key business and financial terms for the option to ground lease and ground lease between the county of Placer and Costco Wholesale Corporation; two, authorize the Director of Facility Services or designate to execute the real estate lease services and property development agreement between the county of Placer and Conkey Real Estate Development at a cost not to exceed $937,500 in net county cost; and three, authorize the Director of Facility Services or designate to execute the site access and negotiating agreement between the county and Costco Wholesale Corporation. And I also want to add that this is just the beginning of a step. This will be heard through Planning Department, all of our municipal advisory councils that are affected, and also the Planning Commission.
Second.
And I just want to point out that I want to assure the board that the environmental findings for the specific actions before the board are fully consistent with SECRAS interpreted by both the tariff case by the California Supreme Court and by the more recent case, Court of Appeal case Cedar Fair versus City of Santa Clara.
Great. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much.